Si o o government does not pay its workers well and does not have an organized system, how do you expect foreigners to come all the way to come and put in a system that works? Hi guys, this is Golele Motam, also known as Gilwapa Zed, girl from Zambia. If you're new to my YouTube channel, please subscribe so that each time I upload videos, you will be notified that Gilwapa Zed apposapoka video. Thank you, thank you so much for more than 60,500 subscribers. I am so grateful that you people have been coming to my YouTube channel and sharing my videos na to tella sana. It simply means "thank you" in Zambian language. In this video, I want to address a few issues and this is like a meeting. When we hold a meeting in Africa, we always have an elderly person who opens the meeting, prays for the meeting and reads a proverb before the meeting starts. And therefore, I would like to read a proverb so that we can refer to that proverb throughout this conversation. It doesn't matter where they are from Zambia. The same systems in Africa apply to all African countries. So please, I will use Zambia. I'm sure you will relate to everything I'm saying, even though I'm talking about Zambia, you will relate even with your countries. So here's a proverb. This proverb says... So here is a proverb: "When a bird builds its nest, it uses the feathers of other birds." And this proverb simply means: "We have to cooperate with other people to get anything done in life." Anything that needs to be done in this life, we need each other. We need to work together. And we cannot continue blaming each other. It's your fault, it's my fault. You did it, I did it. As you are aware, I've been vlogging about different issues that take place in Africa. And because I'm from Zambia, I've been receiving a lot of emails and voice notes from people who are worried and concerned about the situations in Zambia. So in this video, I'll be particularly talking about Lusaka City Council and with reference obviously to Mao Sampa. Because for the past weeks, obviously you've watched videos of Mao Sampa doing his best to help the Zambian citizens that were being racially discriminated by the Chinese. And Mao Sampa is a mayor, obviously, of Lusaka Council. And obviously, when he received the whistleblower's information, he was going there. Now, what I'll tell you about Lusaka City Council is something that Mao Sampa is aware of as well, but his hands are tied. He can't do much because of this person there and that person there. So he can only do so much for the people of Zambia. So I'll start going through the notes because it's important that I go through the notes so that we get each and every factor right without making a mistake. So, the whistleblower explained to me that when Mao Sampa joined Lusaka City Council, everyone was happy because Mao Sampa is a very hard-working person and they knew that change would come. But like I've said, his hands are tied. And most people that have said what they have to say to me about Lusaka City Council is that "Everything changed when our current president became the president of Zambia." But when it was Maikochul Fesata, things were different. People received their salaries on a monthly basis without issues. So number one problem: salaries. People are not being paid their money. How are people expected to live on their daily lives without money? So let me just read some points. Okay, so I was explaining that Lusaka City Council employs general workers and then we have the local government commission which employs officers. And in order for you to be deployed to a different town or area, you need to bribe money. You need to pay someone and that fee is 3,000 kwaacha. You see, we have developed a culture in Africa, not just Zambia, where in order for anything to be done, we believe in paying. And that's a culture that has been built. I'll give an example of the UK. If I want to apply for a British passport for my children, I just need to fill in the forms and I wait for the passport to come as prescribed by the form. If you've paid for the express, it's seven days. If you've paid for the longer, time is two weeks. And within those days, you will get the passport without any phone call to anybody. You don't even know who's dealing with the passport. There is no communication whatsoever, but you will get your document. Now, in Africa, we have a system where if you're looking for a job, in Zambia we'll call it nchikeleko, meaning "give me some money". If you're looking for anything, you need to pay someone. If you're looking for any connection, you need to pay someone. So a lot of people are paying a lot of money just to be deployed to eastern province, southern province. That's if there's an opportunity. And it can only happen if you have paid. Now, where is our integrity as African people? Where in everything we do, we always want to pay. Anything we want to do, we have to pay. That's just the way it is. These are the problems that we need to deal with first. They're foundational roots. Once we deal with these problems, that is when we can deal with Africa and say we are now in Africa. Otherwise, it will be the same thing of talk, 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 and we are still on the same level. So let me just go to the bottom side, I start from here. So, Lusaka City Council has housing and social services. And then they have various departments where people have, you know, training in carpentry, have training in catering, have training in ICT, have training in all sorts of things. According to the whistleblower, Lusaka City Council makes a lot of money. Huge money, a lot of money. It starts from the land rents, parking spaces, levy shop. You know, shop owners pay levy. Churches as well, paid to Lusaka City Council. Garbage collection. So many levies are done through Lusaka City Council. Now, when the money is paid, that money is supposed to help so that the workers of the council are supposed to be paid, right? But no, it is not happening. Why isn't it happening? Because the town clerk has been busy. Very, very busy at that. He gets paid without fare. Councilors get paid and then the workers don't get paid. And if they try to speak about these things, you are fired. Are we in a dictatorship in Zambia? Where people can't even voice out and they are scared because they will be fired? How can you fire a union that is speaking on behalf of the people working for the government of Zambia? And daily, this person mentioned, just on an average, say if a student is paying some money or they're paying some monies, they make even 50,000 kwaacha a day, which is about 5,000 dollars a day. But they are failing to pay the salaries. You see, what makes the western world beautiful is not the buildings, it's not the roads, it's not the cars, it's the system. They have a system which works. They know that when the taxpayer pays the taxes, those taxes are supposed to pay salaries. They're supposed to pay the police. They're supposed to pay these people. And everybody gets their salaries every month without fare. Now, what makes Africa a big failure is because we have failed to run systems that can sustain our economy through the monies we receive. When there is money being deposited in Lusaka City Council, another person is thinking of how they will fly their girlfriend to Dubai. Selfishness. So the town clerk, I've been trying to find him, but for those of you who know if he's the one, please correct me, but the one that I have found, according to this post, his name is Alex Munza. This is the image. This image is from two years ago on Lusaka City Council forum on Facebook and they were celebrating his birthday. And the person that sent me the voice note said, "He needs to go. He has overstayed his job because he's not doing his job correctly." And this person complained bitterly. This is a credible source. I don't deal with third-class sources. I deal with, they all read, people who deal with these guys directly. So they collect campaigns, they collect all these things, but still, people are not being paid. As soon as Edega Chagwalungu became president, all these delays came in. They've talked about decentralization of, you know, systems. You know, Lusaka City Council should run this, you know, trying to divide into departments. It's on paper, but it hasn't happened yet. So the man still gets paid, Alex Munza, even though he's been overstaying on that position and he doesn't even care about paying people. When it comes to salaries and people are pressuring money, this is the feedback I got, the information I got. He runs away, he goes on a leave and comes back whenever he wants. Recently, he had a scandal where his girlfriend, whom they worked together, a 20-year-old girl named Linda, and him had a scandal where they were found kissing in a pub and somebody took pictures and posted them in the toilets of Lusaka City Council, the civic center. And everybody was talking about it and according to my reliable source, his wife, I think was part of the whole scandal. And the pictures were exposing his dirty works. And what he decided to do was, "Okay, you can talk about me and play with me at civic center. I will move my girlfriend to another location." So he moved Linda to Kamuala. And she's now working in Kamuala as, you know, it's a civic... She was moved from civic center and is now working in Kamuala. Now, Linda is a ghost worker. A ghost worker is one that can sit the whole day on their mobile phone and pressing to find out if this person has posted anything and they'll take pictures and post as if they are at work or doing anything, but they are not. She's a ghost worker who doesn't do anything. She's never broke. Gets paid a salary of 7,000 kwaacha a month, which is about 300, 300 pounds to 400 dollars a month, she gets paid that much. She flies to Dubai. Recently, the town clerk even bought her a car. Like I've said before, this is what they are doing with your money. In 2021, you better vote wisely. Every civil servant, don joko. Don't be comfortable with this so-called system where people are sitting down and being paid. In order for you to survive in the western world, you gotta pay for your money. You sweat. And that is why certain African people, when they are abroad, they fail to, they can't afford to stay abroad because it's hard work. Who's going to give you free money? You can clean toilets, you can do all sorts of jobs. Nobody will sit the whole day as a ghost worker on Facebook and be paid. Unless, of course, you've got your residence permit and you have to prove as well, things have changed. You have to prove why you can't work. So you have to have some form of disability or some form of illness. Then you will get a little money for you to stay home. Otherwise, it doesn't work like that. They will put you on even jobs where they know you can sit the whole day. In case you say your legs pain, they will give you jobs like that. So she travels, you know, different places and despite people complaining that, you know, they are not being paid and the union workers being sacked, up to today, they have not yet been returned to work. As we're speaking now, they are at home because they voiced out. And majority of people who are being given jobs in Lusaka City Council are cadres. People with grade 8 certificates, if there's even grade 8, dropouts from school, grade 9 certificates being given positions of even as as huge as an accountant because they are cadres. And every day, there's employment. They are being recruited. Every day, they are receiving letters of confirmation that they are being recruited. Cadres are giving friends jobs. The whole place is a mess. Remember what I said: "In order for us to work our systems in Africa, we have to work together." If your mind is to serve the people of Zambia, you have to be willing to change things and to work with the people of Zambia and to coach them that they cannot sit the whole day to be paid like Linda. And Linda is not the only one who sits at home, by the way. So these people from Lusaka City Council, councilors, they recently, or let me say, they usually even travel for workshops. Thank God for COVID-19, they are stuck. I don't even know if there is even workshops or they go to holiday and enjoy women. Yes, and they go to Dubai and/or India for workshops and yet people have not been paid. They use people's salaries, yeah? At the expense of others, they are doing these things, they are going for workshops. Now, we've said that the union was suspended for speaking for people and they are scared to speak. And the same councilors that work for the council have got tenders. Now you see why you don't have a job or a contract. They are passing on contracts within themselves. So if a government has a tender of, you know, supplying maybe ink, they give it to themselves. So you, an outsider, your business will struggle. Your business will struggle. And then there was also an issue of people being taken out of, you know, the council, taking them abroad, flying them abroad for training so that they should acquire skills for six months. These people, the councilors, are putting their family members who don't even work for the council to fly abroad. And those who are working for government are just looking. These guys are untouchable. They are like murderers. And therefore, Alex Munza should be fired. I don't even know what he's doing in that position if all these things are happening. So you can imagine he had images of him kissing the girl all over the toilets and he decides to move her, speaks to another councillor in another, you know, side of Lusaka City Council and she gets a job just like that because of one: sex. Remember my videos? When I say "People are paying with their bodies", this is what is happening. Okay, so civil servants, you have been told, "Vote well next year." People who are working for Zicta, which is an accounting firm, no salaries. They haven't been paid, they are complaining. Vote wisely. Zesco, which is our electricity company in Zambia, people are complaining, no salaries. So if the government does not pay its workers well and does not have an organized system, how do you expect foreigners to come all the way to come and put in a system that works? So you see all the problems that we have of foreigners paying people 600 kwaacha, which is about 30 dollars or 40 dollars. Foreigners doing this and this is because of the system they have found. It is corrupt. So all they do is adapt. But remember, they are coming from systems that work. And when they come to Africa, they're just like, "Oh, okay, this is how they live. We are in Rome now. Let's live according to the way the Romans live. We will also pay people according to how we feel we should pay them." If the government does not pay people for two months, you expect the private company of a foreign investor to come and pay people at a required time? They will also take their time because you don't pay. So it starts with you. Okay, so each time people pay money, obviously the money is deposited in the accounts, I've said that, and no one knows where that money goes. These are people who handle money, that see the money. Not, I'm not talking about these unreliable sources that spoke about these things. So people are suffering for three months, they haven't been paid. And every day, you know, there's positions. People don't even qualify. People can't even speak English, they're in positions. And then with teachers as well. We know there's a huge shortage of teachers. Yes, it's not a shortage, they are, they are there. Positions are there, but you need to pay somebody for you to be deployed. That's the way it is. So if a teacher has qualified as a qualified teacher and cannot afford to pay money, "I'm sorry, you will be at home till thy kingdom come." So raise your 3,000 kwaacha and take it to Lusaka City Council, bribe someone and you will get a position, okay? That's the system that is there now. Okay, so we've talked about the man flying the girl to Dubai. She buys, you know, clothes and blah, 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 blah. So these are some of the problems. I know there is more that people are facing. People are not being paid and yet the town clerk is being paid and the commissioners are being paid. And you know, the complaint from these people was that "What is the essence of education? If people study, get to their degree level and they cannot be deployed because they need to pay money?" Zambians are really being exploited by the system which doesn't work. Corruption is there, big time. And that is why it is affecting everything. Everything. Even the investors that are there, somebody will go there and tell them, "Okay, in order for us to do this and this and this for you, pay such and such amount of money." And they are paying because that is the system we have shown them. If you show them a system, you can't bribe a police officer here if he pulls you over. You can't even remove. It is a huge offence. So until we work with our system, which will take maybe 20 years from now, we will sing "Hallelujah", "Praise the Lord" every time about the problems of Africa. Because this is a problem everywhere. And then, on a final note, Tassila Lungo, the president's daughter, was at Lusaka City Council and they complained to her everything. Everything. Thinking she's a mighty savior, she will change things. She's never even done a follow-up. She doesn't care! She left America to come to Zambia when she heard that the father was a president. By the way, Tassila Lungo is from the president's first wife, ex-wife. And when she heard that the father was a president, she was in Zambia because she knew it was time to benefit. And who knows, her accounts are fat. She's a millionaire now. Yes, I don't think she would want to be doing shifts like you and me abroad. So despite all these things where the council makes a lot of money, people are still suffering. The parking spaces you're paying for. Everything you're paying for, toilets you pay for. Those monies are supposed to go to the people who work for the government, but they are not being paid. So I am pleading with you, Lusaka City Council, to change everything. You have an opportunity of about five months to clean up your dirty works. You don't need to be this corrupt. It's a disgrace. It's painful when you see people complaining as to how they've not been paid. And Lusaka City Council alone has about 5,000 employees. Now you can imagine, 5,000 employees are waiting for a monthly salary and the money is not coming because the town clerk has gone to Dubai for a workshop. A workshop. And the girlfriends are spending a lot of money, government money. Africa, it will take time to recover you. Zambia, we can blame the president today. Blame this one. It also starts with us. If we refuse certain things, somebody tells you to pay 5,000 kwaacha for you to get a job, if you refuse and protest, and you know how you can't even protest if you protest, they fire you. The one who was put in position, you were nothing before you got that position. And now that you have that position, what do you do? You want to take bribes from people. You want people to pay you money for something that they benefit from or something that they qualify for? This world is tough. They say the world is tough, but Africa is toughest. Because when you see all these things, you hear of these things and you're like, "Okay, the monies they are collecting is not..." Imagine shops at shopping malls, they pay loads of money. That's why shops like at Monday Hill, they pay rentals of like 3,000 dollars. Now imagine, how many shopping malls in Zambia do we have? We have so many shopping malls in Zambia, more than clinics, more than hospitals, more than schools, shopping malls. So many. Every corner there's a shopping mall. Now, all those shopping malls are paying levy to Lusaka City Council and yet they can't afford to pay salaries. Oh, Lord. This is tough. When I decided to become a vlogger, I never expected I would talk about such things or I would face such. But anyway, it is my profession as a social worker. These are the things we deal with. And when I see how the government is failing because they have housing and social services, they are failing to help their people. And yet when I see here how they even have a lot of money from taxpayers' monies that even remain and they are like, "Okay, can we look for who needs something?" We even start looking in the system who needs something because the money is too much. But in Africa, the money is too much, it goes to the pocket of the councillor, the town clerk, the girlfriends, everybody they collect. And like I said, Mao Sampa's hands are tied. And earlier, I didn't want it to be the beginning of the video. Earlier today, a video leaked of Mao Sampa. Some people came to see him from the... He lives near a graveyard called Memorial Park, which is owned, I believe, by a white family. which is owned, I believe, by a white family. It used to be their own house or farm and then they used to bury their own families. And then, I think due to space, they allowed people to bury others. It was really beautiful and huge. My dad is buried there as well. So he heard that people have been kept there on quarantine. And each time, you know, Mao Sampa has been attending different places just to make sure that people are safe and everything. So he got that information from a whistleblower. So the workers from the cemetery got to his house. They sent a representative. And that representative was trying to be, you know, they had an argument basically. And he lashed at him with, "I can't show this on YouTube because I don't want to be in problems with YouTube." And the video has gone viral with statements of, "You see the mayor, he's now beating up his own people." Politics are dirty in Africa. They set traps for you. That's why Mao Sampa should have resigned. Because if he had resigned, he wouldn't face this. Because people would, why would somebody come to your house at night? For, you know, if anyone wants to meet him, they know his office. They should have gone to his office, not to his house. But because they want to find him, do something wrong. They just want to find something and set him up. And apparently, there's even, you know, a report. I'll let you know about that later. But I didn't want to really go in those details. My concern is, I want all civil servants in Zambia paid this month without fail. If they tell me they haven't been paid, it means we will start probing you guys, yeah? So let's just work as a team. Make sure you pay my people and change your system. Clean up, remove cadres, remove people who are not qualified. And according to this whistleblower, they have one request. Please, can we dissolve the commission? And appoint a new chairperson? Because the whole system is messed up. They have a wage bill which keeps on growing, right? Because obviously, there's lots of people that they keep on hiring. But salaries are in arrears. And also, you know, all these chairperson and Lusaka City Council, their wages keeps on going higher and higher as well, higher. But, you know, people are still not being paid any money. So in conclusion, government institutions have a pathetic working culture. People go to work to sit down. They are not doing anything. I have seen it before. So it's not, you also have seen it before. It's not news. People sit down the whole day. And now with social media, they are on social media the whole day, but they are in the office. The work culture is pathetic. And that is what is also instilled in us because we are always expecting to get free money. That is why up to today, fifty-four years of independence Zambia, we are still begging for money. And yet, we have gold. And yet, we have everything. Most African countries, they are relying on, it's always, "Give me money, give me money." And that's why people can go to work the whole day and sit. So the working culture is pathetic. People chat the whole day, they sit down the whole day, and they expect people to pay them. So people are tired of what's going on. And they can see what's happening, but they can't speak. Their lips are sealed because if you speak, you will be fired. It's a girl, Lulumotans, also known as Gelwapa Z, Girl from Zambia. Thanks for watching my YouTube video. And as we started with a proverb, we will end with a proverb. Another proverb says, "Where there is honey, they are bound to be ants." If something nice happens there, there will always be small problems associated with it. The way I interpreted, you know, where there is honey, they are bound to be ants. If Africa was a poverty-stricken place, we wouldn't have people flying in like ants. We wouldn't have people flocking to the honey. It's because Africa is the honey. We have the honey, which is sweet, wealth, riches. But we are relaxed, sitting the whole day, expecting government to pay us. If you don't change as a civil servant, don't expect government to change as well. Like I said, it's a family meeting. We are rebuking each other. We can't just rebuke government when you yourself, you sit down the whole day. You too, you are a problem civil servant worker. We can't just blame the government, 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 government. If the government finds you working, there is no way the government will not be motivated as well to support your ideas and your visions. Don't get me wrong. I mean, people who don't work. There's people who work who deserve the money and have been crying for their monies. They are the ones I was advocating for. But you, who goes to work because you are sleeping with the councillor, you are the girlfriend to this one, please, if you can't work, stay home. Allow people who want to work to work so that they can be paid. Because you are the reason why those people are not paying money. They are giving you money to go to Dubai. They are giving you money to buy cars. I mean, a twenty-year-old already has a car. She's got a business. Oh, Linda, you're doing so well. For those of you who know Linda, who works at Kamuala Council. Yes, that's Linda. And you know Linda is a common name. Anyway, thank you so much. Take care, guys. I love you. I will now leave you with a video from the Lusaka mayor Mao Sampa and what happened to him. And then we will discuss during a livestream at 6:00 PM tonight so we can talk about these things. Let's meet on my YouTube channel to discuss the video. Take care.
Leave him, leave him, leave him. Don't repeat. Don't come to my house. Correct me for wrong. You are still talking. You are still talking. I'm the one who...
Thanks for watching my YouTube channel. Please don't forget to subscribe and hit the notification button. And follow me on all social media platforms. It's simply @lulumotans.